To order and, uh, if there's any member of the public who wishes to address the board on any agenda item, must sign up using the blue speaking request card. And turn them in to Ms. Tammy over there. If any member of the public who wishes to address the board on a non-agenda item, must sign up with the yellow speaking request card. And that's found on the podium and then turn it in to Ms. Tammy. And please, uh, prior to speaking, uh, state your name and address for the, uh, so we have an accurate record of who spoke. Just like to remind everybody, this is a professional meeting at the school board. And the board is having this meeting to discuss the business of the school board. We ask that you address all comments to the school board. Okay, um, at this time, Ms. Latner, come on up.
It's my pleasure to introduce you to this evening, Ms. Sarah Beth Rutherford. She is the daughter of Dan and Gina Rutherford. Sarah Beth is a member of the Madison First Baptist Church and is a senior at Madison County High School, and she is also dual enrolled at North Florida College. She is the co-captain on the MCHS varsity cheerleading squad where she has cheered for three years. She was selected this summer at FCA Cheer Camp as an All-American Cheerleader, as well as to serve on the FCA Ministerial Staff. Sarah Beth is a member of Beta Club, National Honor Society, FCA, and FFA, in which she holds office as a reporter. She currently volunteers in her spare time at Madison Veterinary Clinic while also working at Madison Dental Associates. Sarah Beth is also the 2025 Miss Madison County. Again, I proudly present to you Ms. Sarah Beth Rutherford.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, I would like to start off with my prayer choices is in response to what is happening in our community lately. Would you please bow your heads?
That's all standing, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, with heavy hearts, we come to you today. We are heartbroken by the violence that has shaken our community and taken a precious life. We pray for the victim and his family, for your comfort and strength. We also pray for the students, teachers, and staff who may be left with fear and trauma. Calm our hearts and help us find peace in this tragedy. Lord, we ask that you turn our helplessness into action. Help us be more kind, more compassionate, and more aware of those around us who are hurting. We pray that this sorrow will not define us, but instead unite us in strength and hope. I pray that we can all glorify you in every action that we make possible. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I proceed, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sarah Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, uh, the first, we're gonna first start out with our, uh, uh, TRAM meeting. We got a couple, uh, people that want to speak, uh, at this meeting. Ms. Pamela Williams, if you would, come up, please, ma'am. State your name and...
Pamela Williams, residence 192 Northeast Lamb's Ear Drive, Lee, Florida, 32059. I'm here today to speak about the, um, school taxes and how, and find, and to find out information as to how the taxes were assessed. As of January 2025, the Lee School has been closed. I would also like to know how that tax bill will be appropriate, appropriated to the residents of Lee, Florida as well. Okay, my taxes increased $217.68 from last year. Based on statistics and the information that I've researched, the property values for the state of Florida were reduced by 40% in the year of 2024. And as of today's date, my property taxes have increased by $41,000. I need to know, how do I find out the information regarding the increase? And how was the property appraisers, what was the property appraiser using to assess a new value of an increase of $41,000 for the year 2024?
Me too.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So the, uh, when you're trying to figure out your tax bill, you've got two things. You got, and I think you've alluded to them. You've got the value of the property that's assigned to the property by the property appraiser. And you've got the tax rate that is assigned by the school board, in this case, or the county commission for the county taxes, et cetera. The valuation of your property, in other words, the value that's placed on your property that's taxed, that's done by the property appraiser, and this board doesn't have anything to say about that. You would have to take, if you had some question about that, or you didn't agree that it was appropriate, you'd have to take that to, first, to the property appraiser. If you did not, uh, uh, agree with the determination of the property appraiser, you can appeal that to what's called the Value Adjustment Board. Um, and those, the dates for all of that was set out on the notice that you got in the mail, um, dealing with your assessment. I don't know what those dates are off the top of my head, but I think they're close. So you should probably go, uh, pretty quickly to the property appraiser's office and talk to them about your value, if you have questions about your value.
Can appeal be submitted?
You, you can appeal that, the, uh, the value can be appealed to what's called the Value Adjustment Board.
Right.
And so that, but that has to be done in writing and submitted by a certain date, and you'd have to talk to the property appraiser about that.
Okay, understood. But at the same time, this is a school board meeting regarding the school board taxes, correct?
It is a, yes, it is a school board meeting regarding the school board setting of the millage rate, which is the, the percentage, basically, of the value of the property that they're going to tax in the upcoming year.
Right, but the miller rate is based on the value that the property appraiser has assessed the property at, correct?
No, ma'am. The actual, the tax bill that you get is the millage rate multiplied by the value that the property appraiser set. If your value goes up, the millage rate might go down, and your bill might still go up, right? The millage goes up, and if your value went down, your, uh, tax bill might go down. It's two different things.
Okay, so this is information that I need to go in and, and try to do a little bit more research with, which I will do. But at the same time, I still would like to know what's gonna happen with the school at Lee, since it's been closed since January 2025.
So that the ad valorem taxes, that this district levies are levied, uh, countywide, and they're not, they're the same countywide. So just like the, uh, people that, let's say, were living in Hamburg or Lovett and weren't near any school, had to pay a certain amount of tax back when we had the outlying schools, right now, the people that live further away from the inland schools still have to pay that same amount of tax. It's not dependent upon whether or not your school that was closest to you is still in effect, is still, uh, operating. And so there, there would not be a refund of taxes or a change in your tax liability because a school might have been closed.
But the school for elementary, I'm currently paying two taxes, school state, which is overall county of Madison County, and then I'm paying the local school taxes as well.
So the way those taxes are set is there, when you set up the, uh, when the state of Florida set up the way school districts operate, the state of Florida, the Department of Education, uh, provides more than half, is the last time I looked at it, the money to run the school district. To do that, uh, to receive that money from the Department of Education, the Department of Education requires that we levy a certain amount of ad valorem tax. That's the piece on there that's the required effort. There's also separate amounts that are discretionary, that the school board has some discretion. Uh, they're much smaller amounts, but there is some discretion there on how much that they, uh, can levy. Those are all levied, though, countywide. There's not, there, there's no separate tax that you paid because when Lee School was in operation that you won't pay now that Lee School is not in operation. That, that's not how that works.
Okay, so, in other words, you're stating that due to the fact that federal funding was not given to the Department of Education and to the state of Florida, we still would be levying higher taxes to add on to that deduction that was not appropriated to us as well?
Well, the, the way I would say it is that the closure of the school doesn't affect any of that.
Right, I understand that, but I'm...
Before the closure, DO, the Florida Department of Education would set a mandatory amount that we had to levy, and then there was a discretionary amount. After the school closure, nothing's changed. The Florida Department of Education sets a mandatory amount, and there's a discretionary amount. The closing of the school has nothing to do with that. It's still done the same way.
Okay, so can you explain to me why my property taxes, why the increase happened, and why the value went up?
I, I can't.
You can't?
The, the value of your property was determined by the property appraiser, and nobody with the district had anything to do with it.
But did the millage go up?
Now, I don't know that.
The millage actually went down slightly, the required portion. Like Mr. Reeves said, there are, uh, uh, smaller portions that are discretionary. Those are leveled every year, but compared to last year, it went down slightly. What we're seeing here in the county is a, if you look at the, uh, the taxable value of all property here in Madison, you've just seen a steady increase. And that's what's generating, when you apply the millage to the, the, even that it's a lower millage, but you applied the...
To the value.
To the value, which is up roughly $130 million, if I looked at it correctly. This year, so everybody's getting tagged for...
So can you explain to me, based on what you just stated, how the county of Madison property values increased and the rest of the United, the rest of the state of Florida decreased by 40%?
We, we can't explain any of that. That's all with the property appraiser, dealing with value.
Okay, that is property appraiser as well?
The property appraiser sets the value for all of our properties, and we, if, if we like it or we don't like it, has nothing to do with it. She, she sets the value, that's her job, and...
It's a she?
It's a she, yes.
Okay, so do you know the millage that's being calculated for the school district now? Do you, do you know that?
It's 5.334 mill.
5.334?
And it's, uh, 3.08...
Wait, go slowly, I'm over 60.
I can give you a document after the...
Okay, I would appreciate that, Ms. ...
You know, when they send, um, when the property appraisers send out these bills, they give an estimation, and each one, it has anonymized, county, Swannville District, uh, school, state. And so if you look at that, and they give you the date that they're having the public hearing.
Right, that's what I have in my hands right now.
See, see there, where it's anonymized there?
Mm-hmm.
And then it says county, it says state, Swannville District, if you're in the Swann, whatever, and those are individuals.
Right, I gathered that, but unfortunately, I was out of town, and I missed the meeting on the 10th, so...
But I think if I'm hearing Mr. Copeland right, the millage this year is actually a little bit lower than the millage last year. So if your tax, if your school board part of your tax bill increased, it would have had to have been due to an increase in the value of your property.
And the value of the property.
Which we don't have anything to say about here.
Right, that's understandable, thank you, and I'll wait for you at the end of the meeting. I thank everyone, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Lacy?
Uh, I have a teacher voice, so I hope you'll forgive me if I just say here. My question is, this is something I've been concerned with, I have called, but have been unable to get an answer. My address is 4824 Southwest Mosley Hall Road. I'd like to find out how much money, either directly or indirectly through the state, we count on, that comes from the federal government, which is incredibly unattainable at this point. The reason being is, folks, I would never lower taxes that go to the schools purely. You don't get enough money now. You need more, and we all know it. But I am concerned, having taught special education and understanding how much of that funding for a good program must come from the federal government, and having seen them come in and take computers out of a person's desk in the middle of an IEP because their funding had been dropped. I think it's important that we look at that, know what it is, and have it in our back of all of our minds, where are you gonna cover it from? I'm not asking you for those answers, but I would like to know the numbers.
Ms. Lacy, we'll give you a call back. I have your telephone number, and we'll get those numbers for you, and we'll give you a call.
Okay, I, I just want you to know that I hear these people talking about, oh, we're gonna get rid of property tax, or we're gonna have anarchy. You guys have to have taxes to pay the teachers, and we are the cheapest state. The fact that you wanna pay a substitute less than they can make at McDonald's is criminal. So, you know, we need to be thinking about how that is. You obviously are grossly underfunded.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're running a favor fund you here.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Pickles, I'll get you that information. Okay, uh, Mr. Copeland?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here tonight, obviously, to finalize our budget, we went through our tentative budget hearing, I think, back in late July, and, um, you have an agenda. We've traditionally done this with a one-page summary, and the cadence of the final budget approval, we, we need to stick to it, there are some statutory requirements. And so that's why I put together just a brief PowerPoint I gave each of you, so I don't skip a step. But we'll go through it, and we'll, I'll answer any questions that you have. We need to review our final millage and approve that, and we need a motion for each line item there before we move on to the final budget. So if you look at page two, you'll see our required local effort, discretionary operating, and capital outlay. These millage rates are the same that they were in the tentative budget that was published. And so, uh, and again, uh, as we just discussed a little bit, slightly down from last year. But you will see on the left side of the presentation, the taxable value at 1.4 billion versus 1.367 last year, that there is a steady increase in the taxable value. So we, we see an increase in our estimated revenues from the millage, which comes in at almost 8 million. We budget that at 96% per statute, so that's 7.65 million, which is an increase over last year. And one other thing we have to cover, the total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate by 6.77%. The rollback rate is the rate applied to this year's base that would equal the same amount of money you got last year, and it's just a formality we have to cover. So, um, please don't ask me too many questions on that. And, um, but that's the millage, again, the same as it was in the tentative, uh, budget that was published. So we can go ahead now and then move on to the final budget, if you wanna go ahead and entertain a motion for each one and approve. I have a resolution that Chair can sign after the meeting.
Okay. All right. Required local effort?
I move to approve the required local effort, RLE 3.0860.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Ms. Thompson, uh, to approve the required local effort, RLE, RLE of 3.0860. Any discussion on that, any questions? Not all in favor? Five zero. Okay, do I have a motion for the discretionary operating of 0.7480?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the discretionary funding of 0.7480.
I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Hagan, and a second by Ms. Knight, to approve the discretionary operating of 0.7480. Is there any discussion, discussion on this? Not all in favor? Five zero. All right, I need a motion for the capital outlay of 1.5000.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the capital outlay at 1.5000.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Hagan, to approve the capital outlay of 1.5000. Any discussion on this? Not all in favor? Five zero. Now, I do the total, too, or you are not?
I would.
Okay, all right. I need a motion for the total of 5.3340.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the total of 5.3340.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Hagan, uh, for approval for the total of 5.3340. Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor? Five zero.
Okay. If you move on to pages three and four, these are simply summaries of the one-page document you each received in your board docs. And, uh, for the '25-'26 year, our total budget's projected at $36,771,506.
Okay.
Go on to page four, again, this is simply taking the, all the minutia in the one-page summary and just giving you a, a quick succinct breakdown by our different funds. Uh, again, this is right in line with our tentative budget that we published and, and covered a couple of months ago, and these totals reflect the totals on the one-page summary.
Mr. Chair?
Good.
I move to approve the superintendent's final budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
Second.
That amount is $36,771,506.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. Hagan, and a second by Ms. Gibson, uh, to approve the superintendent's budget of $36,771,506 for the '25-'26 school year. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero.
If y'all have any questions, that's, that gets us covered.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Okay, now, I'm gonna call the, uh, the regular school board meeting to order. We have an amendment to the agenda. All right, uh, we gonna, this is gonna be, um, 6.4?
6.4?
6.4, right. Uh, it is, uh, the revised 2025-2026 articulation agreement between the Madison County High, High School and the Big Ben Technical College. Okay. We don't have any, we don't have any, uh, public comment for the agenda items, so we do have one for, for, um, non-agenda items, so that'll be, that'll be down at the bottom. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, have a, have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Hagan, to adopt the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Okay, we're going down here to the consent agenda. Uh, it's 4.1 minutes, 4.2, the sports schedule, 4.3, the grant approval.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gibson, and a second by Ms. Hagan, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? Anyway, not all in favor?
Let me make a comment on that, the grant approval there.
Okay.
I see it's for student support and academic enrichment, 85,000. Okay, for migrating students, how will we see this play out in the school? In other words, what...
With Title IV, we were using part of this with our interventionist.
Okay.
So that's part of where this money, that's the big portion of this, so that's where you'll see...
With the interventionist, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Five zero for the consent agenda. All right, financial and HR items for, uh, individual consideration, 5.1, personnel changes. Mr. Copeland?
Hello again. You'll see the, the personnel changes in, that you have in your package. I will note that we had two late additions, and I know we, our goal was not to have the changes late like that, but the two individuals, uh, at the top for food service, we received their information and decided to add them to the meeting tonight, uh, with the fact that we are desperately in need of food service workers. And so apologize for the late addition, but, um, just please note that that was a, there wasn't much we could do about that, but we felt we needed to get it, get it approved as soon as we could.
Okay, we have a motion for the personnel change.
I move to approve the personnel changes.
I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Ms. Thompson, for approval of the personnel changes. Any discussion on them? If not, all in favor? Five zero. Okay, the volunteer list, Mr. Copeland?
Again, you have that in front of you. Is there any questions of such? We're happy to have them.
We're happy to have them, you're correct.
Yeah, that's right. Do I have a motion for the volunteer list?
I move to approve the volunteer list. I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Knight, for approval of the volunteer list. Any more, any more discussion on that, other than we, we glad to have them?
We appreciate them.
All in favor? Five zero. 5.3, Madison County Start with Success Teacher Induction Program.
So, um, Ms. Thomas is not here, so these are our new teachers, and so mentors and mentees, so each are assigned, and they will start meeting with them, and then it states in here what all they have to do, and go, going through the program, and then each mentor will receive $100 per month stipend, and so to be paid twice a year in December and May. So we do ask for your approval of our mentor-mentee list.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of the Madison County Start with Success Teacher Induction Program?
I move to approve the Madison County Start with Success Teacher Induction Program. Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, and a second by Ms. Hagan, for approval of the Madison County Start with Success Teacher Induction Program. Any discussion?
Um, I think this is a wonderful program. It's nothing new. I mean, teachers have been getting mentors from basically day one, but I think it's, it's, it's gotten, it's singling out another who's the new teachers and who they're gonna be connected with, and, um, I'm very, very happy to see this. It's gonna be very beneficial to new teachers who need that support. I'm gonna talk about it a little bit more at the end, but that's what I have to say about it for right now.
Okay. All in favor? Five zero. Okay, um, safety and mental health. Coach Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What you have before you, if you looked in, in your packets, uh, two things. One from Navigate 360 and one from Centegex. I will discuss the, um, the project from Navigate 360. This is, uh, what we use to keep up with and house our data for suicide risk assessments and, uh, in addition to that, this year we're gonna get some, uh, case management for our kids with, um, behavior issues. So it's gonna give us another platform to, to be able to help these kids, to offer them, services if you will. They can go through behavioral, um, management modules and help them get better. But the biggest part of this is the suicide risk assessment that houses the actual, um, risk tool that the state requires us to use and it gives us a better, a better place to keep up with the data and, um, keep up with students that are undergoing this process. So, and this will be paid from the, um, the mental health allocation.
Okay.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
The only thing with, with this contract, and it's certainly legal and you can do it if you want to, um, it's got a, uh, it's a five-year contract and you can't cancel it until the third year. So you're, if you approve it and enter into it, you're signed up for three full years. So I'm not, I'm not saying approve it or don't approve it, but normally with our contracts, what we like to do is have a sixty-day or a ninety-day out if we, uh...
This is, um, and, and Tom is right, but this is, we, we already used the suicide risk assessment. It was in conjunction with the, um, threat assessment, but since Florida has come with the, uh, threat assessment model, we don't, no longer need the model from Navigate 360, so we kept, we kept the, uh, suicide risk assessment portion and added behavior portion. So we've been reaffirming this every, every year for the past three years, I think, um, but I just wanted to throw it out.
Are you, but are you renewing it right now? Is that what you're saying?
Basically, we're renewing it without the threat assessment.
Okay, well, can't you renew it with a, like Mr. Reeves was saying? In other words, renew it without committing to, for three years?
I, I will reach back out to Navigate 360.
Okay, thank you.
If the board's interested in doing that.
I'm interested.
What you could do is you could approve it, provided that they'll add a, a clause that you can discontinue it with ninety days written notice and then if they won't do that, then they bring it back and then, you know, you make your decision.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the renewal of Navigate 360 with the addition of the exit clause.
Ninety days? Second. Is it sixty or ninety?
Whatever they're going to, they'll have to negotiate that.
I'll go ahead and say ninety and then.
Say ninety-day exit.
And then if, if they won't do that, they'll bring it back.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by, um, Ms. Knight and a second by Ms. Hagan to approve the, um...
Navigate 360.
Mine won't come up. Navigate, Navigate 360, um, with the exit clause of ninety days, right?
We can cancel it for any or no reason over ninety days written notice.
Okay. All right, any, any, any more discussion on that? Not, all in favor? Five zero.
My board docs just went down.
All right, the next thing you have in front of you is the contract with Centegex. Devon, I mean, Ms. Thompson brought it up, uh, in the meeting, um, a couple of months ago. We've been going back and forth with some negotiation and bargaining and we think we've come up with a, uh, pretty good deal. This is a three-year contract and what we're getting from Centegex are we, uh, they will equip each staff member at Central Land High School with wearable panic badges, uh, that the, the staff members will be able to utilize instead of, you know, relying on a cellphone, um, to, to try to get that message out. Included in that is the, um, wearable badges, visitor management, um...
Strobe lights.
Strobe lights in every classroom and every hall and, and the high school and, um, central school. Uh, AP, uh, PA integration, in other words, if lockdown was called, it would go through the PA system, uh, all over the school. It would also take over computers and flash screens and, uh, let everybody know that a lockdown is occurring on campus. Uh, the badges can also be used in non-emergencies also, so it's, it's customizable how we set it up.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because it's been a little while. I saw a demonstration on it. I think, and I don't know if this is a feature that we will have, but if we, in the event of an active shooter, it even can track down to the classroom that the panic button, button was hit in.
Yeah, it'll integrate with our digital maps that we have already created and, uh, and, um, it'll take some work, but we can integrate it with our, our current, uh, care systems also.
Okay, 'cause I was listening to this yesterday, um, sixty minutes, one of those loose tabs, and then they even had the ID tag that you could...
It is, that's what these do.
It's wonderful for safety of our staff and our students.
So that's gonna be on the bag that they can...
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we got to watch them demo the system in, at our first FSBA conference, so we've been advocates for it ever since and it, it is a magnificent program.
Yes.
Absolutely works.
Okay.
This is the same thing, maybe they've got a free-year commitment, which you can't get out of, so. Again, it, it's legal for you to do it, that's not how we normally do it, but that's up to the board.
I do, I do wanna say they gave us three years and locked us in with a five-year, with a five-year price.
For the rate.
Yes, yes.
Right, so...
Yeah, if, if, if we insist that we have the ability to cancel, they may not lock in right at that age.
I move to approve the contract with Centegex as presented.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. Thompson, have a second?
My second.
Have a second by Ms. Knight to approve the Centegex, uh, order acknowledgement as presented. Is there any discussion?
Okay, is this sixty thousand for the three years right there?
Yes.
Where, where, where does this come from?
It's something that outside school, so it's always a, uh, LCI head funds. It qualifies to be paid out of our local capital and we had it in our advertising and so we should be fine covering that.
Unfortunately, outside school.
It should cover the whole thing?
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Thank you, sir.
You sure that's all? Okay. All right, staff travel, Dr. Pickles.
My microphone won't move, it's stuck. So we have free travel, uh, before you, there's the FCCR Literacy and Leadership, Leadership Professional Learning Services for Dr. Holmes, the FAD Strategic Planning Operational and Resource Management, um, that actually, Mr. Williams and I will attend and Gainesville, it's just a half a day, we'll go down to half-days and then the FSFOA cohort meeting for Ms. Fletcher. So I do ask the approval for these three trips.
I move to approve the staff travel.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve the staff travel. Any discussion? Not, all in favor? Five zero. Okay, let's see where we at. Six point three, uh, North Florida Child Development Agreement, uh, Ms. Gaskin. I, I, I forgot that you had signed this thing. It was under something else, but I found it. So come on up and you, you get your three minutes now.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you all here. Thank you for continuing the services to our children and, um, actively look at the MOU that you have in front of you. Karen, Ms. Pickles and I have discussed it and, um, she wanted to wait until my board signed it, uh, when you all decide after that and that is, that is gonna happen on the twenty ninth of this March. We can, we still need to be invoiced or approved and whatever. We actually got it today and so, um, we can do that and we, we agreed to everything that she did some changes in the MOU that she discussed at the workshop, which unfortunately I did not know about the workshop and, um, I did not attend the board meeting, but I apologize. I definitely have a vested interest, I always have, I think it's the thirtieth year or something like that, but, um, as, as soon as we sign it, we're good to go as far as the board is concerned. I will answer or clarify any of the questions that you may have or had at the workshops or the board meetings. I did a few of the videos, so there were, there were a few out there, but if you have none, I continue to...
Yes, ma'am, I have some. There are seventeen slots. There's my name right there, sir, if you had taken.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Okay, there are seventeen slots that you have cut from Greenville. You have a total of how many? Fifty-four slots and there will be thirty-seven here in Madison. So if you wrote the grant for the fifty-four slots, you've cut the seventeen slots from this poor rural area, high poverty area of Greenville where I represent those people. What are you doing with that money and how are you going to, um, accommodate those children? If you cut those slots, how are you going to accommodate them?
Well, Ms. Hagan, um, last year and the year before, we had seventeen slots and Brittany had our, we had no, we ended up with twelve this year and last year. We could not fill those positions. She actively recruited, she did the best she could and, um, when, when we can't find the children, we, we...
But those slots are still in your budget?
They are still in our budget and we, I have since found out that there is space available in one of your centers, so now that I know that, we can start discussing that, but I'm not going to promise it.
But we can't discuss that and we can't approve this contract until we have all those slots and all that information.
I can't, there is none on the waitlist, Ms. Hagan. There is none.
Okay, what I'm saying is here in Madison, those seventeen slots has been approved and paid for through your grant, so we do have room here.
I do not have those students on a waitlist and I cannot, I cannot forecast...
I'm talking about funding, funding.
Funding.
You have that in your...
I have that funding.
That's what I'm talking about.
There were none, there were none available and I have to use that funding, excuse me, I have to use that funding when a center does not come up with the seventeen I did not cut. We can use those in another area until the next year, but if, if there's none available and we still don't have seventeen on the waitlist, we can't just, we can't serve over-income children with the seventeen paid slots.
I'm sure that we have them here in Madison. I'm well familiar with the community of Madison and no effort has been made because this is the first time that we have discussed that seventeen slots.
That is something that...
And so until we get that seventeen slots, um, filled and we can get whatever, I'm recommending we don't renew this contract.
Well, we're willing and able to sign it and serve the...
I'm not signing anything, I ain't voting for it until we get everything that we need to have.
Every center that we got, got flat funding, okay? This is what has occurred. We get no cost of living and we may get cut further. We did the less impacting that we could do. This happened.
Yes, ma'am.
When we didn't, listen, we transferred every child that could come to Central.
We're having that same problem here at, um, we, we know about funding, we're having that same problem with our board, so I'm understanding about...
It did not impact, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm understanding about funding, but I'm saying this has not been brought up for discussion, those seventeen slots that you have received the fundings for and it has, and so we're not knowing, 'cause we know this community and we do know that we have enough children in this community, community to fill these seventeen slots. And I had, from Greenville, I've had so many questions and so many concerns about how the program is run, has been run. I've had so many problems about children not being picked up, uh, buses and we've had to accommodate these children, we've had to feed these children and, um, I'm still yet receiving calls from people in Greenville who is saying that their children are qualifying for these services, but they're not getting the services.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Hagan, let me tell you, we, we start recruiting in January. In January of twenty-five this year, any child that could be, was going to go forward, already eligible, goes forward, meaning they go up to the four-year-olds. We had seventeen at one time, three-year-olds. So what happened this year, what I looked at was the overall impact and the overall, it, the least amount of impact. We had twelve children. Seven transferred to Central, four moved away. Ms. Brown and her family advocate and the teachers could not recruit or, or there, there was none on her waitlist. We have to have a hundred and twenty-five percent on the waitlist. Now, you may know them, but, but that's part of the work of the center.
Let me ask about that waitlist. That waitlist was from Greenville, so they did not know to recruit from Madison.
Yes, they did. Yes, they did.
Well, we didn't have no, we, it has not come before this board.
Ms. Gaskin, you did not have those seventeen spots open. You closed those spots because I reached out personally to place students from Madison in the program and I was told that those slots were closed, they were not available, so, you know...
Who did you reach out to?
Again, this, there's, there's a...
They were not closed, the school closed and what we did was do...
What it appears is, is that you received funding for those positions and you reallocated it to salaries and other places.
No, I did not.
You know, and, and our students are suffering for it.
I'm, you're, you're misrepresenting what I'm trying to do.
I'm just giving you what our perception and what we're experiencing and what the parents are experiencing.
I, I wanna clarify that. It is not what, what, what the flat funding did was cost of living, everything went up, everything, and you know that, I'm speaking to the choir here. So the least amount of impact was doing the internal transfer of those children. Nobody at the time that school ended was impacted. That's what, that's, that's the job I had to make.
Classrooms were readily available for those, for those seventeen slots. We were told that you did not need them, you were not going to continue with those seventeen slots.
Well, I'm sorry about your, your, that was incorrect.
Well, at the end of the day, there's just a very, uh, there's lack of transparency, there's lack of communication, um, this has been, we, we fought very hard to keep this program going for you from the very beginning since we, since I came on the board and you have misrepresented your information. You have not been very forthcoming and honest with us as, as, you know, as a partner and it's, it's becoming very frustrating to continue to fight for these children when you aren't fighting for them as well.
Oh, yes, I am. I, I beg to disagree with you.
Your absence says otherwise.
My actions are within what I can do and what I can't do. What I made sure of is there was the least amount of impact.
We've been trying to get this contract negotiated for over a year now and it has still been, you, you just, you keep kicking...
Well, you had a change of guard and that was the biggest mix-up that ever.
And again, your absence speaks volumes. You have not been present at any of these meetings. We have pulled one of your employees up to speak on your behalf.
My, my very own employee didn't even let me know there was a workshop, okay? But that, that's on me, but I will, I will, I have always been here.
At the end of the day, our priority is the children, 'cause at the end of the day, you, you don't, you don't live in our community, you don't deal with these children. We want them to be educated and we wanna make sure that they're getting everything that we have to offer, so if that means that we have to no longer work with you and partner with you so that we can bring those kids, kids into the district program to make sure that they're taken care of, that is what we will do.
I have nothing official in writing that says you have space for me.
I've got a question, Superintendent.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
Until she came on board.
Okay, I was gonna say, I offered you extra space back at the end of the school year.
That she just said she didn't have.
And so why was that not accepted? That was gonna be my question, because I know that Dr. Pickles did...
We did not have any on the waitlist. That's a, that's my, that it was my, my...
Exactly.
That, the, I offered the extra space because we were consolidating the school so you would be able to use those seventeen and still keep them.
When, when we select in June of fifteenth, June of fifteenth is when... When we select, in June of '15, June of '15 is when we know what's moving forward. And that's when there was not a sufficient enough waitlist.
I'm just gonna be honest with you, I feel like you're kicking the can down the street so that it's at our expense, because we just keep saying that we're gonna keep paying for all of this so that the children do not suffer, okay? And it's over and over and over again.
We needed to reconcile our records, and you will see, we've never missed paying for meals, we've never missed paying- there's a list of things that we paid on the transportation, and we could not effectively, efficiently run two buses with seven or eight kids on each bus. But we cannot put a child on a bus without a monitor.
But we were not notified of that, and we had-
Well, Ms. Brown spoke to you and said-
Ms. Brown is a principal at the Central School, Ms. Brown.
No, she's talking about-
Oh, really?
Madam Superintendent.
Just one second, Ms. Gaskin.
Is it possible to transfer these children to Madison County Central?
That's what I asked the last meeting.
This is what I'd like- I don't know how many we're talking about here.
It is.
Except the three-year-olds, I think.
We can.
You can accept the three-year-olds, okay.
That is what I recommended the last meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
So, let's talk about- because there were some questions brought up at the last meeting, so I have the information. So if you will look at what's before you, you did ask for the '24-'25, and so-
I did that.
Yes. So there are some discrepancies. On September 3rd, the board approved the particular page that has up at the top, '24-'25 approved on 9/3/24. So if you look at paragraph three, and it says NFCD agrees to pay contracted transportation services for the transport of NFCD children. Contracted transportation services will be paid biannually with the first half due December 31st, 2024, and the second half due June 15th. Cost of transportation services will be $51,675. The returned agreement I received that was signed, because we could not find a signed agreement, that I did receive on September 4th of this year. If you'll note with the page with the red writing, the whole paragraph is changed. It does say that NFCD agrees to pay the salaries and fringe benefits for bus drivers in transport, and then it does say in parentheses, "Cost of transportation services needs to be discussed during scheduled meeting with Superintendent Joseph on August 27th, 2024." Regardless, the signed agreement that I received back was never brought to the board for approval back in 2024. So did calculate based on the returned agreement, and those salaries would be $42,072. So there has been no payment, no payment made in December nor June, so whether it's the $51,675, which this board approved, or on the signed agreement for the $42,000-
And we sent that check.
Which the board would have to accept and approve the prior- the signed agreement which was returned, because the agreement was changed from what the board approved. So that was the question that was posed, what was actually approved. So I've researched, found all that information out, so that would be the differences. One contract says one thing, another contract, the return says something else.
It seems to be a common theme.
And no funds have been paid.
I want to say-
We've received no funds.
Correct.
No, we- I've got canceled checks that are signed, I mean, that were given to your-
For food service.
No, for transportation.
And the amount of what?
Well, we did BPK, $6,000. We did $21,000 for the partial payment for the year, and then we did $51,675.
Do you have a copy of that so that we can see?
I didn't bring it, but I've got it.
We can't go on- you have to go on the signed contract, what's in it?
I'll go get it. It's in my car, some of those are, but not- I mean-
I think that if I recall correctly, this was a very common theme the last time we met.
Amen, yes ma'am.
And there was a lot of questions.
Every time I would get something from Ms. Joseph, it would be a little bit different.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with Ms. Gaskins, I feel like the common denominator in the issue is you. You know, we have a new superintendent here, and we're still having the same issue.
Let me go- let me be easy for you a minute, and I'll go get those.
If all five of us were on that board with the-
We've all been here since the very beginning.
I understand that.
Being board.
May I ask that we recess for five minutes and allow Ms. Gaskins to retrieve those documents? Can we have a five-minute recess, please?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can we recess for five minutes?
Yes, we'll recess for five minutes.
I'm gonna go to the restroom.
Get a rest.
Hello. My wife told me I needed to change my shirt.
Yes.
I do know, but just we have to ask them.
You got a copy?
I gave you one.
Yeah.
So we've never asked you to serve us everything at Greenville?
No, because I have to serve us first.
You're right.
We gotta get them paper.
That's right.
You're right, you're right.
And let him talk to them, hopefully take everything.
All right, go ahead.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
A hundred percent.
Well, you know, I would tell them before, sometimes they want to save a box just for parts.
Not necessarily wrong, but if you save it for parts, give up the tag, and then you don't have a tag on it, you don't have to insure it.
Because our times are forever, Ted.
Right.
And so I think it's going to come back in a year to try to talk important stuff.
It's steadily increasing.
And it's love for the government and for the country.
For this year, more than last year. And so what's happening is everybody's really trying to apply for the award.
I can't believe it.
I'm sorry.
I'm making this evaluation a year old.
I had some reviews just yesterday.
Because based on my office, and based on my station in California and in Miami, property prices are increasing.
I can't handle that.
I can't.
I can't.
I can't.
I can't.
I can't.
I can't.
So that can be based on sales.
So there's a cap, or instead, so property prices, does what I was listening to, then they can be assessed for taxes, and they grow up to 40%.
So let's say my guy goes up 20% one year, or the next year it's gone up 30%, or the next year 30%, or 40%, until you hit up 20.
Hey, which is pretty good, especially if you have some wearability.
Or consider also, you catch up with the buyer, so the new buyer can get the thing.
That's what Billy always tells us, that my job is to keep everybody in.
I don't even know the time I called for that research.
She hasn't come back in yet, hopefully, until she gets back.
She'll have all the stuff, I know, this is how I write that.
I need to drink some water.
I'm still congested.
I didn't deal with it, he thinks she's not doing it.
I wonder if she just don't cover it.
A lot of it's going around.
Well, it started with the syrup, and then all of a sudden, just right now, I'm just congested.
Patrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Take care and drive safe.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
We got two left.
I got two left. I'll put two minutes on my phone.
Do you want me to check yours?
We weren't voting on this.
I haven't gotten one.
So we don't vote.
Huh?
She don't drink?
Yeah.
Don't know what she ain't making.
Sent somebody out to lunch.
Sent somebody out to lunch, yeah.
Yeah.
She might be, she ate too much.
All right, get fair. Give us some good food, I don't think that, how full I am now, I don't think that I can eat for two or three more days, but I know I will. Connie, you should have been here to get some of that good food, and I promise you, it was good.
I bet.
It sounds like microphone almost like feedback.
Oh, it's one.
Oh, gotcha.
Is it that?
Yes. So she said-
Okay, okay, we're gonna call this meeting at the board. Ms. Gaskin.
If I could ask all of you to give me until tomorrow, to put this in your hands? Because I wanted to make sure everybody has a copy in their hands, and I'll have it in order for you of what we have paid, and what we've made our obligations to, and you can ensure what we owe you, and we can move forward to take care of these babies.
So Mr. Chair, I move that we pull the NFCD agreement? I move that we have-
We won't vote on the agreement.
Here's what I was gonna tell you, we have the agreement that I presented, so that's your option, which she has returned the signed agreement, and this board did say they did not want to vote on one until it was signed. The other option is, we do not have an agreement right now.
Okay.
But we have to decide what to do with those children.
Because we keep kicking the can down.
You know, it's either-
And we've got to decide something kind of right soon, like we're gonna be losing funding. So we don't want to lose funding because we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Well, it's not that, it's not fair to these children to-
It is not fair to these children.
It's not fair to the children, not to the board, because all of us have these financial issues.
I agree, and I have been very adamant since we have been on this hamster wheel that we get off of it, and that we pull all of those children that are eligible for the district into the district, and we discontinue this contract, and we take this grant and service these children ourselves moving forward next year.
Is that a motion, Mr. Knight?
Well, it was on the agenda.
Yeah, so.
What is the superintendent's recommendation?
So, I've presented multiple options for you. We currently do not have an agreement.
Okay.
And in the last meeting or two, I keep hearing from the board members, you know, we're needing to do something. We're needing to think of these families. I did receive the agreement back signed. However, then there was more questions asked about the prior contract and what was owed still. I did the research on that, that's what was presented tonight. But we've got to- we can't just keep dragging this out each time. We've got to make this decision.
But I would like to see what they have paid.
I want- I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I want to see what has been paid for the '24-'25 school year based on this contract that we have in front of us.
Okay.
Not previous to '24-'25, I don't care about that, it's irrelevant, this is what we're talking about right now.
Can we afford to put this off for two more weeks?
I don't think that we can.
We would have to have a special meeting. I would suggest- we would suggest a special meeting next week.
We'd have a special meeting like next Monday.
Or later this week, but I would suggest.
Well, I mean, can we have one later this week?
She said that she would get us that information.
I would suggest Monday. I would suggest a meeting, special meeting, Monday.
Let me look at myself.
May I ask a question? How far back- you said the '24-'25-
I just want, this contract that we're talking about with the one that Dr. Pickles presented earlier, and that was presented to this board, where we're discussing the payments of $51,675, half due December 31st, and the second half due June 15th, 2025, I want records of those payments for this contract. I don't want anything- I'm not saying that it's not relevant, but what I feel like is most relevant is this right here.
Well, if they haven't paid us in the past, you know, that's very relevant as well.
Well, I agree. It is, but right now, we're talking about, these payments were already due for this past school year.
Can I- do we have a record of what- do we have what our records have shown they paid for that contract year?
According to finance, they have not paid anything.
They paid zero.
Only food service, what they have been billed, and they have paid that.
Because I think it's gonna be more helpful to you if we give them the number that we have, and then she can produce the total number of checks. The problem is if she's got a check for a thousand, and we've got they paid some money- you see what I'm saying?
Like the invoice and-
I would like- I would like checks, she said canceled checks, I would like canceled checks with dates to prove that these payments have been received.
And you have the invoices already for the-
Nothing- the only thing that's been paid this year for the '24-'25 is food service.
Okay, so have you invoiced us?
There- you have not paid anything on the transportation, and there's-
Are there-
With these two different- what you sent back, there's two different amounts we're trying to figure out. What this board approved was $51,675.
I mean, and respectfully, that's one of our teacher salaries right there that we're talking about.
And before we go into a new contract, if we go into a new contract, all these old things need to be resolved.
I agree.
And it needs to be resolved soon.
That's what I'm asking, how far you-
Because school started, and now it's September 18th.
Almost October.
That's exactly.
Ms.-
And we've been feeding and transporting these children.
I mean, if I don't pay my bills, if I don't pay my car payment, they're coming to pick my car up, so we gotta-
No questions asked.
No questions asked.
Okay, Ms. Gaskin.
My CFO says we have not been invoiced.
Okay, well, you just said you issued a check for $51,000, but now you're saying you don't have an invoice. This is what I'm saying, you're talking circles.
No, 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 you were talking about '24-'23-'24.
No, we're talking about '24-'25.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm talking about. We did make a payment of $51,400, whatever that was, but it was for the school year. We did $6,000 in '22-'23.
And that was it for '22-'23?
Yes.
That's about a problem.
Well, that was summer school BPK.
I was gonna say, wasn't that summer school?
Yes, well, it was $6,000 just for that.
I mean, that's two years ago. We'd be kicking this can down.
Sent somebody out to lunch.
Sent somebody out to, yeah.
Yeah.
She might be. She ate too much.
All right, get fair. It was some good food. I don't think that, how full I am now, I don't think that I can eat for two or three more days. But I know I will. Connie, you should have been here to get some of that good food. And I promise you, it was good.
I'm glad.
It sounds like microphone almost like feedback.
Oh, it's one.
Oh, gotcha.
Is it that?
Yes. So she said.
Okay, okay, we're gonna call this meeting at the border. Um, Ms. Gaskin.
If I could ask all of you to give me until tomorrow, get this in your hands. Because I wanted to make sure everybody has a copy in their hands. And I'll have it in order for you of what we have paid. And what we've made our obligations to, and you can then tell what we owe you. And we can move forward to take care of these babies.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we pull the NFCD agreement. I move that we, um.
We, we won't, we won't no vote on the agreement.
Here's what I was gonna tell you. We have the agreement that I presented, so that's your option. Which she has returned the signed agreement, and this board did say they did not want to vote on one until it was signed. The other options, we do not have an agreement right now. But we have to decide what to do with those children.
Yes, exactly. Because we keep kicking the can down.
You know, it's either.
And we've gotta decide something kinda right soon, like we would be losing funding. So we don't wanna lose funding because we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Well, it's not that, it's not fair to these children to.
It is not fair to these children.
It's not fair to the children, not to the board, because all of us have these financial issues.
I agree, and I have been very adamant since we have been on this hamster wheel that we get off of it, and that we pull all of those children that are eligible for the district into the district, and we discontinue this contract, and we take this grant and service these children ourselves.
Is that a motion?
Moving forward next year.
Is that a motion, Mr. Knight?
Well, it was on the agenda.
Yeah, so.
What is the superintendent's recommendation?
So, I've presented multiple options for you. We currently do not have an agreement. We do not. And, and in the last meeting or two, I, I keep hearing from the board members, you know, we're needing to do something. We're needing to think of these families. I did receive the agreement back signed. However, then there was more questions asked about the prior contract and what was owed still. I did the research on that, that's what was presented tonight. But we, we've got to, we can't just keep dragging this out each time. We've got to make this decision.
But I, I would, I would like to see what they have paid.
But I'm gonna move.
I want, I'm sorry, I'm not, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I wanna see what has been paid for the 24-25 school year based on this contract that we have in front of us. Not previous to 24-25, I don't care about that, it's irrelevant. This is what we're talking about right now.
Can we afford to put this off for two more weeks?
I don't think that we can.
We would have to have a special meeting. I would suggest, we would suggest a special meeting next week.
Like, like next Monday.
Or later this week. But I would suggest.
Well, I mean, can we have one later this week?
She said that she would get us the information.
I would, I would suggest Monday. I would suggest a meeting, special meeting, Monday.
Let me look at myself.
May I ask a question? How far back, you said, just 24-25?
This contract that we're talking about with the one that Dr. Pickles presented earlier, and that was presented to this board, where we're discussing the payments of $51,675, half due December 31st, and the second half due June 15th, 2025. I want records of those payments for this contract. I don't want anything, I, I'm not saying that it's not relevant, but what I feel like is most relevant is this right here.
If they haven't paid us in the past, you know, that's very relevant as well.
It is, but right now, we're talking about, these payments were already due for this past school year.
Can I, do, do we have a record of what, do we have what our records have shown they paid for that contract year?
According to finance, they have not paid anything.
They paid zero.
Only food service, what they have been billed, and they have paid that.
Because I, I think it's gonna be more helpful to you if we give them the number that we have, and then, then she can produce the total number of checks. The problem is if she's got a check for a thousand, and we've got they paid some money. You, you see what I'm saying?
Like the invoice and.
I would like, I would like checks, she said cancel checks. I would like cancel checks with dates to prove that these payments have been received.
And you have the invoices already for the?
Nothing, the only thing that's been paid this year for the 24-25 is food service.
Okay, so have you invoiced us?
There, you have not paid anything on the transportation. And there's, are there?
With these two different, what you sent back, there's two different amounts we're trying to figure out. What this board approved was $51,675.
I mean, and respectfully, that's one of our teachers' salaries right there.
And before we go into a new contract, if we go into a new contract, all these old things need to be resolved.
I agree.
And it needs to be resolved soon.
That's what I'm asking.
Because school started, and now it's September 18th.
Almost October.
That's exactly. And we've been feeding and transporting these children.
I mean, if I don't pay my bills, if I don't pay my car payment, they're coming to pick my car up, so we gotta.
No questions asked.
No questions asked.
Okay, Ms. Gaskin.
My CFO says we have not been invoiced.
Okay, well, you just said you issued a check for $51,000, but now you're saying you don't have an invoice. This is what I'm saying, you're talking circles.
No, 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 you were talking about 24-23, 23-24.
No, we're talking about 24-25.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's what I'm talking about. We did make a payment of 51, or whatever that was. But it was for the school year. It's 6,000 in 22-23.
And that was it for 22-23?
Yes.
That's about a problem.
Well, that was summer school BPK.
I was gonna say, wasn't that summer school?
Yes, well, it was 6,000 just for that.
I mean, that's two years ago. And that would have been. We'd be kicking this can down the road for three years.
You're saying we owe the money from back pay.
So, this board asked specifically to reconcile the 24-25 contract. Because there's discrepancies between the two contracts.
Okay, my CFO says we did not get an invoice for transportation, transportation. That's, that's what she told me this morning. But I'll find out. Because I've got up through 24 then. I'll get you the information, the reconciles of 24-25, if you can resend the invoices. An absolute dialogue to, between myself and Ms. Joseph.
Do we just want to schedule a meeting for next Monday?
Let me look.
I'm saying take these kids to the district and.
Really, today, tonight.
But it's the pleasure of this board.
I'm, I. Meet on the 22nd.
I'm not beating the 22nd, because I wanna take it through tonight. I wanna get everything resolved tonight.
So how can we, I think that, I can, I know I can speak for me, and I feel like everyone else, that we want these kids to be served. That it is not our desire for these children to not be served. I think the hangup is the three-year-olds with, you know, I, I don't remember the number.
Dr. Pickles has said that we can accommodate those people.
Can we accommodate the three-year-olds or just?
They can, they can be assessed and should be able to be accommodated.
I am recommending that we move all of these children into the district, and we continue this contract with North Florida Child Development.
I support the motion.
Did you say continue or discontinue?
Discontinue.
Well, we do not currently have an agreement, so we do not have a dis.
We decline to enter a contract with North Florida Child Development moving forward.
My second stand.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Pagan, to discontinue the, um.
Not interest.
Decline to enter into.
Decline to enter into an agreement with the North Florida.
For the 25-26 school year.
Child development for 25-26, uh, school year.
Yes, I do have some. Can we discuss a possible transition plan for these children? We can't, you know, if we, if we completely just say we're done tonight.
This will have to take place this week.
Right, we're gonna have to come up with a transition plan. We can't just leave these families up in the air.
Absolutely. I asked for this to happen two weeks ago. We should have been working on this, so that we can transition these children into the district. We knew this contract has been an issue for the last couple of years. And I don't understand why we keep kicking this can down the road. At the end of the day, these children have to be our priority. They are clearly not the priority over here on this half of the table. So I would like for us to continue.
That is really unfair.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Chair.
I just, I, I, I just still want to know, I mean.
Point of order.
Ms. Gaskin said that she had checks.
Point of order, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. I can, I can say something, though, can I?
Yes.
Yes, sir, but when I call for point of order, to vote.
Well, we're in the discussion section.
Okay, all, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, four one.
We will get right on reaching out to each of the families. We will work with both Ms. Browns to transition. I will also resend invoices.
Yes, ma'am.
And still await canceled checks. If she has those, I will wait to see what she sends.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, for taking of these statements.
Superintendent items?
Yeah, Superintendent items.
Oh, no, what about the addition 6.4?
Oh, yeah, 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 6.4.
Yeah, 6.4, sorry.
Articulation.
Articulation agreement with, uh, with, uh.
So, the articulation agreement, this came back to us from Taylor County. And you'll see the redlined or the crossed-out items. And so this was just some changes, so therefore we have to go ahead and accept the changes. You'll see the couple of changes they made. And so I do accept your, ask for your approval and acceptance of the articulation agreement with Big Ben Technical Center.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the articulation agreement with Big Ben Technical Center.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Gibson, for approval of the revised articulation agreement between Madison County High School and Big Ben Technical Cards. Is there any more discussion on this? If not, all in favor, five zero. Okay, Superintendent items.
So, as you saw in my email I sent out, we did provide additional counselors and mental health professionals for our students and staff today. We will continue to provide those services, especially at our high school. We were actually down drastically in our attendance today, so we're hoping a lot of these students will come back today. We were down between 80 and 100 students. So we're hoping those students will come on back tomorrow, and we will continue those services. And especially for those students. And we're gonna try to monitor and work with our students and really just support them during this time right now. Mr. Muggie has finished the inventory of the items at the Greenville School, which the bulk of the items were moved there. So he's compiling the list, and so we will have a surplus list of items to present to the board hopefully at the next regular meeting. And he will then also now go ahead and transition to Lee and then to Pinetta to finish up the inventory. So he can then start his auctions.
Let me ask you one question. Over at Greenville School, do you have any other books or any other material that can be given away free?
I don't, I think all the books have already been pulled up. But we will look.
Can we talk about it tomorrow?
I think, I think we need to double-check with Ms. Roberts, but I think today she was in there working on some books as well.
Okay, can we talk about it? Because I have a program that want those books and those items.
I will definitely check.
It is open at the, you know, the old Greenville Primary School. There, uh-huh, they are wanting those things, if there are some to be given away.
And I, I'm glad you mentioned that, but if there's any excess books, I've noticed some of the teachers do not have classroom libraries in their classroom, which is very, you know, important, it's beneficial, it encourages reading. So that, that can happen at both Central and the high school.
That's actually a good idea.
You know, so if there's books that have been boxed up, rather than just keeping them boxed up, let's use them. Thank you.
So, look for that. We also have a list from transportation, some of our older buses. So we'll have all of that, so you'll have a rather lengthy surplus list to go ahead and approve. And then he'll start his auctions after all of that, he'll do each site. Recently, each media specialist was asked to review and remove books that were listed by the Department of Education, our AG, as pornographic in nature. So did receive notification from one of our media specialists after a second request. Did receive a few books. I am pleased to say, after going out physically, had to remove quite a large number of titles. And so we will go out and do one last review to make sure those books have been removed off our shelves and are not in the hands of students. So I'm at least pleased to say that. There were some questionable titles that were probably, I guess maybe about a dozen, 14, 15 titles, that also pulled off the shelves. And so we'll go through that review process to go ahead and review those texts, to see if they need to stay. If they're acceptable, we'll put them back on the shelf. If not, we will actually remove those.
Excuse me. Does it be possible to get a list of those books that have been decided somewhere in the ether that they are not acceptable?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I would really appreciate it because I highly suspect that that's a bad thing to do. I'm all favor of having books for the level of child. But when you start pulling them out everywhere, I happen to know that the book that I taught every year I taught has been on that list, and there's nothing in it that shouldn't be. That's why I, sorry, my hatels went up.
Well, it's, they've been deemed prohibited for the content. So I can honestly say, those we could find, we've removed them, which is the reason we'll go, I'll go out one more time. Quite a large number of titles, though.
And we didn't make the list, you know, this came from, you know. Came from up there someplace.
So, and like I said, there were some that were even questionable when we started looking and opened up and see some of the information in there. And it's like, oh, this is a questionable pile, let's, let's put this one over here to research and review, so. Lastly, the attorney did request the surveys to be completed for the various outlined school properties. And so we're just waiting to receive these back, so we can come back on the school properties and review those, and come back together to visit the disposition of the properties. And that's all I have at the moment.
Okay. Teresa.
No, sir, unless you have questions, I mean.
All right, Ms. Gibson.
Okay, I'd like to thank Sarah Beth Rutherford for her comments tonight, we appreciate you. And I'd like to express my sympathies to the families of the victims from this past week. It's a heartbreaking situation, I'm, I'm extremely sorry about that. I'd like to refer back to that 5.3 that we talked about, the Madison County Start to Succeed. It's beginning teachers, and this, teaching is a tough job to begin with, and it's especially tough when you're young and, or whatever age, and you're beginning. So I, I have all the respect in the world for them, I'm glad we're doing this. It's been mentioned before about people coming up and saying something negative about teachers, which I haven't heard it. I've been on the board for 12 years, I sat over there in that seat for five years before getting on the board. I don't see teachers being, I'm sure, you know, there, there's been negative talk about teachers in the community or whatever. But I don't see it at the board. Until the ninth, September 2nd meeting. I wasn't here due to some health issue. And I was just taken back by, I'm not gonna mention the person's name or the, it's in the minutes, so if anybody wants to check it out, go for it. But the superintendent's saying you had an issue with one of our employees. And that bothers me. It's, 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 there's nothing wrong with having an issue with them, but bringing it to the board, I've never seen that before. I've never seen a person get chastised at the board meeting, any employee. Now, it doesn't matter if it's a teacher, or a bus driver, or anybody that's employed here. And is this gonna be the new way of work with us? Are we gonna be bringing employees to the board and saying, you're, you need help, we're gonna get you? That bothers me.
I think my comment that you're referring to is more being very mindful because of our microphones being on.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that comment. No, I'm talking about the comment that you said several, several issues with this person. And as a result, we're gonna get you a mentor. In other words, you, you sought out one of our employees.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I mean, I just want some, I'm just making a statement about.
Well, that, that's a common knowledge and common complaints that have come to the board previously with the individual. Individuals have come and spoken, and I know that also individuals have spoke, and so therefore trying to assist and trying to.
Well, I appreciate you trying, but then again, you mean, like, I'll give you an example. Mrs. Gibson's having difficulty with classroom management. Okay, which is, you know, a new teacher may have problems getting organized and all that. Are they gonna be brought before the board? Every, you did that one, should we do all of them?
This was actually more in a response in a positive way to, because we have been trying to really support the individual.
Well, I appreciate him being supportive, I mean, there's no doubt about that. And a mentor's a wonderful way to do it, and this program is gonna be good. But I still don't like the fact that we bring something like that to the board. In other words, it was up to the principal to, you know, bring the person in and say, we got a problem here, let's see what we can do. But I don't think it's something that should, that's just my opinion. If you wanna continue doing that, that's the way it's gonna be done. But if we're gonna do it for him, it's gotta be done for everybody.
I know which one you're talking about. And this was because of other complaint, parent complaints that were coming, and.
We're gonna get lots of complaints, you know, probably everybody on this board has had a complaint.
And resolving those complaints, or trying to, making sure we provide him with all the outside support available to the individual.
I appreciate that, and I'm glad you're doing that, and that's the proper thing to do. My, I'm not complaining about that, I'm just making a statement that it's, it looks very unprofessional for us to be chastising someone in front of the world out there.
It was not meant that way. It was totally meant and to try to help him, and that we are being very supportive of him.
I'm, I'm glad, and I, I appreciate what you're doing. I'm just saying, I don't, unless you're gonna do it for everybody with an issue, I wouldn't single out one or two people.
I'll be happy to do it for any others that need it and everything. This was truly in more of a positive light, because there were so many negative comments that kept coming. So that's what this, that was not meant in a negative way whatsoever. This was to advise the board that, look, we are providing all these additional supports.
We'll leave it at that, that's, I've had my say, and we'll leave it at that. Okay, one more thing, okay. All right, just for clarity, okay, on this past Wednesday and Thursday, September 10th and 11th, and we're advertising for a coordinator of special projects, and also for a dean at Madison County High School. All right, are you advertising for another special coordinator for the, is this an additional one? Okay, because those people are already in place.
Still going through the process.
Yeah, I mean, their, their name was on the August 18th agenda, but we polled it, remember, the two names, and we said we'll do a workshop, and which we did a workshop, and then we, okay. And so, in other words, wouldn't normally you advertise in the beginning?
And, and still going through.
Rather than put the people in their place.
So we will refer to the first one, that said individual is still listed as an AP in our system. That has never changed.
Okay, well, now, he was put on that August 18th as a, for that position.
That's correct.
And if it weren't for Ms. Yedda and I, he would have been passed, and that would have been the end of the story right there. And it was not advertised at all. So should, should we, I was under the impression that you advertise positions.
So that would have been an internal movement. I control the people, the board controls the positions, and the position was on the agenda.
So there should be no, now, why are you advertising now?
Going on through to see if anybody else wants to apply to.
You mean, but there's nothing to apply for, because you've already got the people in place.
He, he, he's still technically an AP.
Okay, what about, let's go to the dean, the, the second dean at the high school then.
That's just a, he's listed, he's an interim dean. Other people can apply, in fact, it's my understanding, somebody else did inquire.
Okay, so what, if someone applies, what would you do with the present, this new dean at the high school, where would he go to? Every, our positions are all filled.
Classroom. It was another classroom teacher, it's my understanding, that inquired.
Well, you, you would, you would hope that you would have a place to put him, because he's not gonna get kicked out. I mean, this, you know, so that, to me, I think we need to start thinking about this before we, it seems like it was done backwards to me. That's all I have to say about that right there. It was, I needed some clarity on both of those, and I'm glad I got some, let's say.
I don't think the positions have closed yet, so the interviews have not done. They may have closed today, but with everything else going on, we, I, we have anything left.
I guess, it's foreign to me that you say, well, Mr. Gibson, you can get in this position now, and that we're not gonna advertise it, and, and then, but then we'll advertise it later, and you might not be. And then, but then we'll advertise it later and you might not be able to stay in that position. I'll just use Mr. Gibson for an example, who's in the Hayfield right now. But this, this whole thing, it just, it did rub me the wrong way. But that's just me, I'm finished.
Okay, Ms. Knight.
I'm very pleased to see all the volunteers that we have. And I want to thank all these people who are volunteering their services to our schools because we do need those people. We have consolidated, we need more eyes, more ears, more everything at both of these schools. And so, I would like to thank everybody, especially volunteers, who are doing things for our school to make our schools better. The staff, administrators, board members, superintendent, everybody at the school system, community and all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knight.
I just want to also thank Sarah Beth for coming to do our prayer this evening. We always appreciate our students who come out and are willing to share their word with us. I would also like to extend my condolences to the families and all of the people in the community that have been affected by the week that we've had. It's been a very heavy week across the board. And I just, you know, want to encourage everybody to, you know, continue to be a positive light and a beacon of hope for our children, you know, and just continue to, you know, let the good outweigh the evil so that they know that there's another way. And I, I just want everybody to just reflect on, you know, everything that's happening and, you know, be there for our kids. They need us more than they're ever gonna tell us that they do. And I think the last week has been evident for that. So, I would also like to thank the board for coming together this evening prior to the meeting. We had a nice little gathering prior to. It was great to spend some time together to get to know one another in a positive light. And I would like to just encourage us to continue to do that so that we can work together as a team and not chastise and tear people down sitting at the dais. So, I appreciate each and every one of you for engaging and, I'm done. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Did we get an update on the greenhouse and the barn?
I don't have that on that statement of loss. I've received one statement of loss, but not that one.
Okay, this is...
Every, we're emailing about twice a week trying to find out the update.
Okay, I'm, I'm only making some phone calls tomorrow, so when you get phone calls about me making phone calls, just know that...
Maybe you can put some legwork and keep into it.
Just know that I will be making phone calls tomorrow, so when they call you because I'm calling, you, you've been notified.
The director gets copied on my emails too, so...
I, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, I don't know if there's a proper way to start this, but I want to start it on a positive note. I want to mention that Madison County Central School held a goodies with grands, grandparents' day. And they invited grandparents to come out and spend the morning and have breakfast with their grandchildren. And they had over seven hundred in attendance, over seven hundred.
It was a wonderful event.
So, I hate to change and shift gears from that, but I think that's a really positive thing that we need to highlight. And I really appreciate our SRDs for helping with the traffic because I'm sure it was a little chaotic with over seven hundred people in attendance. So, we appreciate that as well. Before we close tonight, I want to take a moment, though, to acknowledge the heartbreaking loss our school family has experienced this past weekend. We lost one of our own, a student whose life was precious, whose presence mattered and whose absence is deeply felt by his classmates, his teachers, and this community as a whole. My heart is with the family as they walk through unimaginable grief. I am praying for their strength, for their comfort, and for the peace that only God can give in the days ahead. As a community, I hope we continue to rally around this family, around our students, and around one another. In moments like these, we are reminded just how fragile life is and how much we really need each other. May we honor the student's memory by showing kindness, compassion, and most of all, unity in the days to come. I would also like to acknowledge and say that I think we continue to pray for our other student who was tragically injured prior to the loss of our other student. He got to come home yesterday and I got to see a video of him walking out of the hospital. So, I would ask that each of us continue to pray for him and his family as well as the family of the student that we lost so tragically. That's all I have.
Okay. It's been a somber week at Madison County for our kids, some of them getting hurt, some of them lost their lives. So, we just need to keep those families in our prayers and our thoughts, and we need to keep all our kids, all of them, in our prayers. Because all of them, the majority, face difficulties every day. And so, we need to make sure we keep them in our prayers, our teachers, our administrators, our lunchroom workers, our custodians, bus drivers, all, all of our employees. Keep them in your prayers because they got, they have a big task, and an important task, especially these days. So, appreciate everybody coming. And at this time... Yeah, what's your name?
Ms. Neva.
Ms. Neva, come on up.
Good evening. Neva Boltsel, sixteen forty-seven, Captain Bowie Road, Pinetta. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Pickles. I'm Neva Boltsel, the director of the Madison Youth Ranch. And normally, the people that stand here before you come with complaints and concerns. I'm doing something a little different tonight. I'm coming with a compliment. I want to tell you about the positive experience that my students and myself have had so far this school year. Because it's been positive and I want to let you guys know about it. I have numerous students that attend both Madison Central School and the Madison County High School. And so far this year, we've had a great experience, both with our district school faculty, who have gone out of their way to ensure that communication is happening in a timely manner, often taking and returning phone calls, texts, and emails, well outside of business hours. In particular, Mr. Patrick White and Mr. Rodrick Williams have gone above and beyond, making sure that I have all the information I need to serve my kids. In addition to our school's faculty and personnel, making sure that our children, not only my children, but the children of others here in our community, have been served well, making sure that IEPs are taken care of and the kids are feeling comfortable and safe in the schools, in particularly Madison Central School. And I will tell you, I was one of those parents that was not excited about getting rid of Pinetta and the other outlined schools. I was one of those people sitting back, very skeptical. And the first month of school has gone much better than I expected. So, I hope that that continues as the school year goes on. But I want to take time to publicly acknowledge that the hard work that those faculty members, both at the district and at the school level, are doing is paying off. And I appreciate it. And my students appreciate it. And I want to say, I hope that they all continue that hard work and that effort that they've put in this, this month and to see our students shine and continue to be safe. And I appreciate the work that the board does. This is not an easy job and I appreciate that you guys take those hard phone calls and take the criticism because I'm sure you get it. And I just want to say thank you very much for all of that work to you and our teachers and our faculty and our school bus drivers and our lunch personnel and our janitors and everyone that makes our children better in Madison County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.